Getting out.
So we're ready to start, Dennis?
We are.
Very good. I wanted to welcome our newest board member, Eric. He's out there.
Yep. Hi there.
Hi, Eric. Nice to see you and nice to have Drew back this year. Thanks, guys, for your service. We've had a conversation earlier in the week and Dan has graciously offered to facilitate as from Vice Chair last year. It'll be acting chair as we select officers for this year, and that's where we'll start our meeting.
Just before we get started, my video is all messed up. So I've got three versions of Drew showing for Drew, Dennis, and somebody else. Is that going to get fixed? I see Amanda and Christine okay. The same person is there for Josie and Cassie. I don't know why. Is everybody seeing what I'm seeing?
I've got everyone where they're supposed to be.
Okay, it must be just me then. I'll try to work through it. Alright, so let's call the meeting to order 5:42 on the 14th of January. This is our first and organizational meeting of the Caribou Planning Board. First item on the agenda is to welcome new and returning board members that have done already. If you can, the election of officers for 2021. And so how we'll work this is we will ask for nominations from the floor and seconds of those nominations. And then for each office, the person who has been nominated will need to either accept or decline. If we only have one nomination for each office, then we will take a vote. If we have more than one candidate or nominee for each office, then we will take a vote on each. And whoever gets the most votes will be assigned that role for the year. Are there any questions or comments on that process? Does that sound right to you and Ken? Ken and Dennis?
Yeah, so we'll take a roll call vote. We can't vote in secret because we can't hand out ballots, so it'll be roll call vote.
Okay, okay, for 2021, the Chair will entertain nominations for a chairman. Are there any nominations for chairman?
I move Dan Bagley as Chair.
Who is that?
It was Frank.
I'll second that. Christine.
Yeah, yeah, please do say your name because I can't tell. Alright, Dan Bagley has been nominated by Frank, seconded by Christine. Are there any other nominations?
Motion nomination cease.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Yes, I will be willing to serve as chairman this year. So let us take a vote on Dan Bagley for chairman for 2021. Now, this is going to be interesting. How are we going to do this? So let's start with, I'm just going to go down the line here. Drew?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Amanda? Amanda? You may be on mute.
Yes. Is that better?
Yes, we heard that. Eric?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And Dan, and I will vote yes as well. So it is unanimous, the nomination for chairman.
Dan, we also have Dave Corvo in the house.
Oh, Dave, I don't see you. Where are you on the list?
He's in the house. He's in the council chambers.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Dave?
Yes, I vote yes.
Stations from the floor for Vice Chairman. I nominate Christine.
I'll second that, Amanda.
Okay, Christine has been nominated by Dan, seconded by Amanda. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chairman? Hearing no other nominations, we will go ahead and take a roll call vote. For Christina for Vice Chairman for 2021. Drew?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Christine, Vice Chairman for 2021. I guess I forgot to ask you, are you willing to do that?
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Follow my process here. Okay, next up is for Secretary. Any nominations for, from the floor for Secretary? It's a real fun job. Just ask Christine.
This is Chair, I nominate Amanda.
Okay, Amanda's been nominated by who?
Drew.
Thank you, Drew.
I'd second that nomination.
That was Frank. Thank you, Frank. Any other nomination for Secretary? Right, hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote for Amanda for Secretary. But first, I'll ask Amanda, would you like to do this?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, go through again. Drew?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And Dave?
Yes.
That's terrific. So we have by unanimous vote, Amanda will be our Secretary for 2021. Well, thank you very much. So any other comments or discussion on election of officers before we move on? All right, well, thank you for those who have agreed to serve. I know for myself, it's been very challenging and really a learning experience and very enjoyable. So I hope that you will have the same experience in your offices this year. Next item on the agenda is meeting the, setting the meeting times and dates for this coming year. So we have traditionally, I think for quite a few years now, second Thursday of the month at 5:30. How does everybody think about that? Are there any other, are there any suggestions for changing that?
Might as well just keep it the same. We've all made it work so far.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. This Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. This is Dave.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Dave, seconded by Drew to keep our schedule as a second Thursday of the month for our regular planning board meetings for 2021. Take a roll call vote on that. Drew?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And Dave?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, so we will keep our schedule. Thanks, everyone. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the December 10, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. They're in your packet. I'm going to pull up that packet.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Is that Drew?
Oh, that was Frank, sorry.
Drew will second it.
All right, Frank and Drew. Frank, moved by Frank, seconded by Drew to accept the meeting minutes as published. Roll call vote, Drew?
Yep.
Christine?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Dan, I forgot myself for the last couple of times. Dan says yes as well, so motion carries unanimously to accept the minutes from December 10. All right, next on the agenda, we're going to have a public hearing tonight on the SynerGen site, site design review. This is the final review. And we will open up the, or resume the public hearing at 5:53 PM. So who do we have here from SynerGen or other interested parties?
We have, this is Hillel Halberstam, managing member of SynerGen Solar, the parent company for SynerGen and Caribou.
Very good.
I'm Rick Jones. We're the firm that had put the application together both for DEP and for you folks.
I'm Josie Ray, and I'm also with Jones Associates.
Oh, that's, who is that again?
Josie Ray.
Hi, Josie. Okay, thank you.
We also have with us this evening Mark Island, who was the consultant that worked on the landfill. Unfortunately, Mark has to jump off for another Zoom meeting at 6 o'clock, so if there were any specific questions anybody might have regarding the landfill itself, if you could ask those questions now, we can let Mark go.
Well, we received today, I believe, an update on that.
Correct. We received the draft order from DEP. We have, it's made available to the city as well as SynerGen for a 10-day period to make comments on that. If they see anything that there is problematic, we have that time to comment on it. Our folks on our side have gone through it and we have not seen anything that we object to. Everything was in line with what they had originally presented to us.
There it is. I was just pulling it out. Okay, good. So are there, is there any discussion? Let me ask a question first. Has there been, Heather, besides this, has there been any changes since the concept design review that we had last time?
There has not been.
Okay, good, because we had a really good discussion and I think we all got a pretty good understanding of what's there. And it was an excellent package, I thought. Just wanted to ask that question to start off with. Now, any, any discussion or comments from the members of the planning board? So I do have a question regarding decommissioning. So I'm not sure what, what structure and format that the lease agreement will take regarding that over the landfill with the City of Caribou. And my concern is if you look at Section 7 of that DEP report, actually, it's all throughout the report. It's very much between DEP and the city. And then there are some considerations of decommissioning that I'm not sure that the city has addressed yet. Dennis, can you provide any insight on the city's plan for decommissioning or otherwise abandonment of this site?
So the process that DEP is going through right now is one of several steps as far as reviewing the application. And we knew when we considered this request to utilize the city's landfill that they were going to have to go through a very rigorous review by DEP. And DEP is, of course, they're looking at the landfill, what's there, making sure that we don't disturb the cap. We've addressed all of this in the, in the review process that we have with SynerGen and recognizing that DEP's got their eyes on everything. One of the reasons why they're proposing the type of installation that they are is because it's going over the top of the landfill. There's, they can't be, there's penetration requirements that DEP is going to be requiring or, or watching. And obviously, on the farm side, the installation is quite different, where they are able to get into the ground and provide a different installation over there. So we've, we have in our lease agreement that SynerGen is going to be taken care of and they're going to be following the DEP standards that they're required to meet, as well as helping us maintain the property while they're occupying it.
So DEP has levied a number of like inspection requirements that the city will have to do. Periodic inspections.
We're required to do that every year.
So you're doing that every year, so that's no added burden?
Right.
So what happens in the event of abandonment or decommissioning, as, as outlined in Section 7 of the DEP paper?
I'm afraid I haven't seen the DEP paper myself, so I'm not quite sure what it is that you're referring to.
So this was sent out today by Ken. So the planning board members, you should have received an email from Ken with the, with the DEP report. Does everybody have that?
Yep.
So if you go to Section 7, what I'm talking about here is in the event of decommissioning, basically, the city is going to be responsible for completely removing everything and restoring everything to its original condition. Is that going to be backed up by a performance bond or something in the lease that lays out terms for that?
And I believe it already does. Let me pull up the lease and we'll look at it.
So that was really the only, the only question I had. I had no questions until I got this today, so.
Well, if you have that right handy in front of you.
I'm sorry?
I don't know if Hillel has the agreement right in front of you. I'm trying to pull it up as well.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to pull it up also as well. But just to be clear, before the, the plan board, we, we haven't executed the actual lease agreement yet, but I did send over a draft. And I'm pretty sure it did have a section in there that addresses decommissioning at determination of, or abandonment of, of the project.
That would be really good. Is this Hill talking?
Hillel, yes.
Hello, I'm sorry.
Let me see. Okay, so this would be in Section, yeah, 5.3 subsection being, I know the planning board doesn't have this agreement yet, but I just shared this with Dennis and there is a whole paragraph in there about decommissioning requirements. The decommissioning, it'll be within 60 days after the lease terminates, at least what's been proposed so far. Tenant shall remove all the components of the project, except for replacing any trees or shrubbery removed, which probably on a landfill you wouldn't want anyways to put back. And remove any mound path support structures and access roadway constructed by tenant if we do end up constructing any.
Are you looking at a draft lease?
Yeah, yeah, I was just trying to give you a sense for what the proposed terms were.
So we don't, we don't have that in front of us?
Right, yeah.
An option to lease. Okay.
Exactly.
I just wanted to highlight that and, and make sure that everything was going to be planned properly and the city wasn't going to be faced with a burden. That's all I had. Were there any other comments or discussion items from the board members?
Just so we're clear here, let's say this solar project doesn't work out, something happens, our grid can't handle it, or anything of the sort. Let's just play worst case scenario. Who's on, on the hook for this? If we have to dismantle these things? I don't think that's been answered yet, has it, unless I missed that? You said it was going to be dismantled, Hillel, in 60 days? Should it arise anything at all? Natural disaster? I mean, anything at all, like?
Well, once it's abandoned, we obviously would have hazard insurance to cover, you know, those kinds of scenarios, but, you know, assuming there's some kind of a situation where the actual lease agreement is terminating, then that's when the, the decommissioning period would, would kick in. And then there would be a period, we would be required within 60 days to essentially restore, you know, materially the, the landfill to the condition it was in before we put the, put the, the panels on, you know, with a few exceptions, you know, that I was listing off before, you know, if we build like a roadway or something, you know, to access, we wouldn't undo that.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Please continue.
Yeah, I was just saying, like, for example, like an access roadway, we wouldn't, you know, destroy the roadway or, you know, put it back to grass or whatever it was before that. But, you know, for the most part, we'd be restoring, restoring the, the landfill to the condition it was in before we developed the project.
Is there any sort of, in this lease, say you sell this to somebody else or any sort of auction like that? Will, will the next party be on the hook for the same exact lease or?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Does the rest of the planning board feel like we should remove this lease before we go any further? Mr. Chair, how do you feel?
I'm uncomfortable about it because, I mean, not extremely uncomfortable, but a little bit of uncomfortable. If everybody does their job and complies with the contract and the lease, everything's fine. But if it gets abandoned, then the city is left with a burden of cleaning it up. And that answers your, your, your question, Drew, because if they abandon it, if SynerGen abandons it and the City of Caribou is under a strict contract with DEP to clean it up at their own expense, the state's not going to help.
There is an indemnification. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
I was just going to add that, that the current draft lease also includes an indemnification clause for, you know, the tenant would indemnify the city for any costs and would reimburse, reimburse a landlord, or the city rather, for any of those amounts if, for some reason, you know, the city would have to step in and do it.
Okay. Have, I just have a general question. Have you guys installed solar arrays over existing landfills previously?
Yeah, we did actually, we did the largest one in Maryland on a, on a, the largest community solar project rather in, in Maryland. That was a, actually slightly larger than this one. It was a 6.6 megawatt project. That was on a, also a landfill in Prince George's County in Maryland.
And in Maine?
Oh, and not in Maine, no.
Thank you.
What comes to my mind is, you know, maybe a possibility of doing a performance bond or something like that to cover the city's risks, but that's, I think that's really a council kind of a decision to make. From a planning board perspective, I think we just need to make sure everything's lined up and seems good to go from a planning board perspective. What, what do you think about that, Mr. City Manager?
I agree. The, the city council ultimately has to check the interests and liabilities of this, of the city and the contract. You're right. The planning board, your role really is to look at it. Does it meet the standards? Does it meet the land use requirements, site plan requirements? As far as the, the obligation that the city has through the project, that is for the city council to make that determination.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the pause. I'm moving around different documents here. Where we need to be. All right, any other discussion from the board or the public? Do we have any, anybody from the public on? They're just listening, right?
We have not received any comment coming from outside, any written comment, or I do not believe there's anyone from the general public attending this public hearing tonight.
Okay. So having no further comment from the board or the public, let's go to 15, page 15 in the packet. If we can work through, actually, it's 16. We can start walking through the final site design review criteria.
Mr. Chair, should we close down the public hearing?
Yeah, thank you. Last chance for any more comments or questions in the public hearing? All right, closed. 6:09 PM. Thanks, Ken. So here we are on page 16. This is going to be a little bit interesting. Now, Ken had provided us his notes, and that's always useful, and thank you, Ken, for doing that. That just gives us a good kind of starting point. And I'm not going to be able to find it. There it is. Bear with me.
And my apologies for that. I sent out a humongous file early, the email. It actually took me three attempts to get through to Frank and Dave. They wouldn't see it from near end, but their email kicked back the 20 megabyte file that I sent over. So my apologies. That wasn't intended.
So I think we're down here. All right, we're on page 16 of the packet that Denise sent out. And you should have also a document that Ken sent out today with his notes. Everybody got that in front of them? Do I need to wait for a minute?
Ken, which, what time did you send that email out?
Um, this afternoon.
Four.
About three forty. No, I apologize. I sent the original one at two eleven. I found to figure out how to get Dave and and Frank in on it at four. So as as we move forward, we see in our minutes that that the preliminary review was was approved with no comments, no concerns, and so we'll move through tonight to our final site design application review from A to Z.
Everybody ready? Anybody not ready? So I think what might work best on this, as we step through each criteria, I'll throw out an answer, and if there are any objections or comments, speak up. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
Any objections to that process? It's not how we usually do it, but I don't know how how else we're going to do it remotely here. All right, well, let's try it and see how it works out. The first one, conformance with comprehensive plan, I would say yes on that. Any objections? Traffic, I would say yes on that. Objections? Site access. I would say yes. Objections? Parking and vehicle circulation, excuse me. I would probably say NA on that. There really isn't any parking to consider. Any objections to NA? Pedestrian circulation, I would say as well, NA on that. Objections? Site conditions. I would say yes. Open space. Not really an issue here, so maybe NA. Sanitary sewage, again, not an issue, NA. Water. Again, NA. Emergency vehicle access. I would say yes.
You ran this by Chief Susie and and Chief Gehigan, and neither had issues with this development.
Right, that was mentioned during the last meeting. Very good. Yes, on emergency vehicle access. Objections? Waste disposal. Probably NA. No waste there.
Just on that same point, the agreement anticipates that Synergium will be maintaining the property during their occupancy of it. So not only maintaining it, but also moving it occasionally for us.
Sure.
As far as the waste disposal side.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay, so as as it applies to it being over a previous landfill.
Well, just in that they'll have to clean up after themselves as far as waste management goes. They don't have to. They're not responsible for getting rid of all the trash on the side. Just make sure that they maintain it and and keep it mowed and and meeting the DEP standard while they're there.
Okay, so I I think I said, what did I say on that? Or did I say anything? How about yes for waste disposal? Okay, buffering. Not sure that there's an issue there, but let's say, I'll say yes. Natural areas. Not really applicable, I'd suggest NA. Exterior lighting. Now, this, I don't remember, did we have a lighting plan? Is it is it lit at all? I don't recall seeing a lighting plan.
No, we we are not proposing any lighting.
I didn't think so. Okay. So exterior lighting would be either yes or NA. I'll propose NA. Objections, comments? Stormwater management. Really good plan submitted there on that. I would say yes. The same on erosion and sediment control, very good plan, yes. Buildings. Really buildings per se, so maybe that's NA. Existing landscaping. I would suggest NA on that. Infrastructure. I would think you suggest yes. Advertising features, probably NA. Design relationship to site and surrounding properties. We have to get rid of that second set of lines there. That's one thing. That's letter U is site relationship, design relationship to site and surrounding properties. I would suggest a yes on that. Scenic vistas and our areas, probably NA. Utilities. This is utility. Recommend yes. Mineral exploration. NA. General requirements, I would say yes. And phosphorus export. I would say NA. So that completes our stepping through the different criteria. Are there any comments? Or maybe you wish to revisit any of these? All right, hearing no further comments. And I'm hoping every, somebody recorded all of these. Ranking. The chair will entertain motions from the floor.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the final site design?
That's right. That's what I'd like to see.
This is Dave. I'll make that motion. That we accept the final site design.
This is Frank. I second that motion.
All right, Dave has moved that we accept and approve the final site design. Frank has seconded it. Is there any discussion before we take it to vote? Okay, roll call vote, starting with Drew.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so the motion carries unanimously. Everyone, and congratulations to Synergium. It's a great project. We're looking forward to it.
We are excited. This should be a good project. I would add, Mr. Chair, that this being a virtual meeting, we can't hand out our signature page. Signature. We can make it available here. We can make it available after hours at the PD for folks coming in and signing. We could distribute the signature page and just staple everyone's separate signature onto the application. How would you like to handle that?
Are there any thoughts from the board members on how we'd like to handle that?
I don't mind stopping by the police sta- station to sign.
Okay, thank you.
I support that.
Yes.
If it's fair, it doesn't matter if it's before or after hours, correct?
Correct. If it's during hours, you can stop in and see Denise or I, and if it's after hours, it'll be at the PD.
Oh, okay.
So till four, four PM?
Four thirty.
Or four thirty?
Okay, so let's do that then. We'll have the the hard copies in the city office. And let's all try to get by and sign them in the next week. If you're during business hours, city, city office, and after hours, the police station.
Can can Denise send out a reminder email on that?
Yes, we'll we'll send out a reminder and let you know when they're available to be signed.
Thank you.
All right, great. I think that concludes our discussion on the Synergium.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Bagley, and thank you, everyone. Looking very excited here as well.
Hey. Thanks for coming by for this. I know it's kind of weird with the Zoom, but we're making it work. Okay, we're next on the agenda is new business, a public hearing to consider daycare application for Kathy Levesque. EBA, Kathy's kids. I'll give everybody a minute to find the right spot in your packet. And we'll turn it over to Kathy for on page.
Thirty six.
Thirty seven, thirty six or thirty, yeah, thirty six, thirty seven, yeah.
So as as the letter says from Ken, this was previously Miss Jordan's childcare, so it's all set up for it. And Kathy's come in and wants to put it back into operation, right? So Kathy, did you want to address the board? Let me open the public hearing first. This has to be a public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, public hearing opens at six twenty four PM.
So, Mr. Chair, there has been no public input either by writing or by calls. I do not believe there's anyone here in the Zoom meeting for public hearing, but Kathy is is present. And maybe she would like the chance to put a a plug in for her new business.
Hi, I'm Kathy. Um, so yes, I want to start a new daycare at Miss Jordan's where she used to be. I'd be licensed for twenty seven. I just had the state licenser come in. So really, the only thing that we're waiting for is Caribou City Board approval. We're taking kids from ages two months to twelve years old. Yeah, I just, is there any questions that anybody has?
Is twenty seven based on the building occupancy limit or staffing limits?
Um, it's based off of room occupancy. I can only have certain amount in one room. And with the space that I have there, the fire marshal decided that I'd be licensed for twenty seven.
So you've had your fire marshal inspection and approval?
Yes.
Oh, good.
That's how, since your application, yes.
Good. D H S as well?
That's correct.
Okay. So they're just looking for a certificate of occupancy, is that correct?
Yes, this is, we talked about this earlier, Dan. This this application would really be a use permit where the building has been empty for a while, except for the the state requires our action so that Kathy can get licensure. And unfortunately, in this document, we require licensure so Kathy can get from the state. So it's kind of, it's a little different, I'll put it that way. But co enforcement has no issues with that building. She's got a lease option with with Carl Soderbergh. Building's in great shape. There's good, good, good opportunity for parking. It's just a little ways out of town. And I think it's a good project.
They just said the building's been unoccupied for more than a year. Is that what it is?
Over a year, yeah.
Well, thank you, Kathy. So so back to back to the board here. So if if you're looking at, if you look at the review criteria checklist, there really isn't much there. And on page forty one, it's all geared toward a home occupation setup, which in this case doesn't even apply. So honestly, Ken, I'm not sure what the planning board is approving here with this particular form.
Well, the initial plan review criteria checklist, I think, would would be what we go over. So that's on page thirty nine.
Right, right. Well, everything is definitely there. Any other comments from from the from, I guess we don't have anybody from the public, any comments from the board? Discussion items on this project? All right, given no further comment, thank you, Kathy. We'll close the public hearing, six twenty eight PM. And I'll turn to the board, and we'll have to figure out what we're going to do with this. There really isn't anything else to consider. Let's go to page thirty, page thirty nine. Let's just look through these and make sure that we're comfortable with it. So at this point, I'll entertain motions from the floor.
Um, I make a motion to give approval for the permit.
Dave seconds the motion.
And that was Dave?
Yes.
So Amanda, Amanda has moved that we approve the project as submitted, seconded it. Is there any further discussion? All right. Roll call vote to Drew.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Amanda.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Kathy. We wish you the best of luck in this project. Hope you take care of those.
We do have a bit of homework. We also have this a signature page that that everyone will need to sign. And Kathy will need the signature as well. That's one thing that was missing. We talked about that earlier as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I always got.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you. Okay.
Good luck, Kathy.
Thank you.
Can I ask Kathy a question at this point?
Can I ask Kathy a question at this point?
Looks like she left.
Okay. Well, just for general discussion. I know I'm a retired agent, but I've never had an insurance agent. I never had to deal with this COVID horse crap. If one of her children should inadvertently get infected, does her insurance policy cover her?
I do not know the answer to that question, Dave. I do know that they definitely have a protocol. They have to follow, much like their school would.
Right.
It's actually stricter than a school. I'm pretty familiar with Jordan's daycare downtown Sweden Street. And they actually have to monitor the children and take temperatures and do it every hour or every two hours. And at some point during the day, one of the children comes down with some kind of a symptom or even just a higher temperature, they have to, have to tell the parents, "Come back and get your kid." They can't be here anymore. So the state has some very strict guidelines for preschools and daycares at this point.
Good to know. Thank you, Dennis.
All right. Any other discussion? Moving on to new business, staff report, I'm sorry. We're at staff report, item nine.
All right, so I included Penny's permit report for December two thousand twenty. We, we've had a busy year. And we're starting off this year busy with demo permits and building permits, so that's all to the good. For two thousand twenty, I had sixty-five notices of violation. I actually had sixty-seven the year before, but I think that we actually did more this year because I reached out through our, our blight initiative to several properties, which I handled a little bit differently, a little bit more personal touch. Trying to get people thinking of putting more property, more value back in their property and seeing if we can relieve some of the blight in our neighborhoods.
Can you mention, you did, can you mention you did a permit report? Was that included in the package?
Well, if I didn't, I will enclose it. That's something that Penny does. She keeps the cards out, fill up the year.
That's always interesting to look at.
Yeah, I'll make sure that everyone gets it if it's not here.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
Yeah. So again, on the blight scene, and I just didn't make my, my little notes here. I've been working with the stakeholders group for the state of Maine to come up with legislation for statewide land bank. Again, as, as another tool to fight blight. We're all in this together throughout the state. As you travel around, you'll see abandoned houses and clough barns and, and abandoned mills and industrial sites. We're trying to come up with legislation, and hopefully that'll make it easier for municipalities to adopt that kind of tactic, being able to do purchase property, give over property to a nonprofit, and ultimately sell it back under taxation, so that it starts to become productive for us once again. Relieve the blight from the neighborhoods. Just this week, we've been handed the program statement for the Community Development Block Grant Program for this year. We're looking at several different avenues that we might, may approach through that, that program. Economic development, community development, maybe housing, depending. One thing that we've, we've come to realize is we're moving people out of the Caribou Trailer Park at the airport. We've given them a year. Calls are starting to come in to see what kind of assistance they can expect in their move. Should, should they be able to move their trailer off that site? Could they be located in town? In many cases, our code won't allow that. The trailers are older. What kind of assistance they can expect monetarily or, or, you know, what, what, what kind of assistance we can offer in general? I've reached out to ACAP and Prescott. They've got some housing assistance to see what we can bring to bear, help some of these folks out. We have about twelve families up there. We have low and moderate income. We have elderly, disabled. So that, that's quite a project in, in that we have November, till November for these people to have to vacate that site.
Now, what's prompting this?
Basically, the, the plan was that the, the trailer park would go away through attrition over the years. We're actually at the point in the park where the infrastructure has decayed to the point that we've reached that attrition. So between the water lines and the sewer lines, trailers now have been abandoned, some falling in on, on themselves. So it's, it's just time.
So it's a Caribou City action to basically condemn the place and get people out of there?
Basically, all the families have been served. They, they're all on notice that they'll be evicted. So we've been the landlord over these many years. There used to be as many as two hundred trailers up there. That, that was quite a neighborhood back in the day.
I can't imagine. What's, what's the city going to do with the, with the parcel after everything's moved out and cleaned up?
Well, the land use is regulated by the Federal Aviation Force. So there are land uses that are appropriate for that area, but we'll develop it as prescribed, how we're allowed to. I almost think that maybe a solar array might be allowed.
So the, the property itself is incorporated within the airport master plan, which has to be submitted to the FAA and has been approved by the FAA. And if you look at the master plan now, it just has a notation over the top of the trailer park that says aviation-related uses. So there is a lot of flexibility as far as what type of uses we could bring in there. A solar array that could support some power on the site is, would be one of those things. I know we've been approached by a couple of different solar companies that have looked at the airport as a possible option. We're, we're starting to hear rumblings now from the FAA that they're looking to to get rid of the cross runways, which utilize only about fifteen, twenty percent of the total traffic on the, on the airport. And if that happens, there will be some additional lands that will be freed up for possible development around the airport.
We've also been very successful in our hangar project. Our hangars are full. So, so storage of, of personal aircraft and other storage could be also an option. So those are the things that we're off to. We're off to a blazing star for two thousand twenty-one, trying to stay busy and all.
You had any words on the final payment of the two thousand twenty CG?
Oh, yes. I'd be remiss if I didn't. We received payment yesterday for the two thousand twenty Small Communities Grants. We're, we're feverishly going over and make sure that all the, the accounts that, that, that were expended from are reimbursed. And there'll actually be a little bit left over for administration. So we've, we've done a good job. I, I expect that next year's round will be announced at the end of this month. So we'll see if, if there will be a, a program for two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. Good, thank you. Anything else from staff? Okay, next item is the two thousand twenty-one Planning Board Goals. And I like what I'm seeing so far right here. A, B, C, and D, Comprehensive Plan Update, Chapter Three Zoning, Light Economic Development Initiative, and Planning Board Training.
So what we're seeing, Mr. Chair, is, is we bring in some of our goals over from last year. And that's not a bad thing. I, I think we're off to a good start on some of these initiatives. The planning board training is something that we've been looking at for a while. We make it available to each elected official, appointed official individually. But we're, we're thinking that it's time for, as a group, that we all sit down and take a training. So NMDC offers trainings, and we can get a training videos probably through MMA. So we'll make it a point to schedule a workshop at some point where we can all sit down and, and have common training.
That would be a really good idea. Who, who on the planning board has not undergone any kind of formal training? I know Christine and I did it last year, and it was excellent. Wouldn't, wouldn't you agree, Christine? Learned a lot.
Frank and I did the MMA one.
Yes.
Uh, online.
Okay, good.
Through Zoom.
That must have been interesting.
It was interesting.
Yeah, no, we, I learned a lot, for sure. So for, I guess, Drew and, and Dave, Eric, definitely, if you haven't had, if you haven't had that MMA training, it's certainly worth, what was it, a few hours, I think, just an evening.
And it really, you know, it covers soup to nuts. You know, in, in these days, we have to think about, we're doing Zoom. You know, how should you conduct, or should you conduct business via email? Freedom of Information Act information. All this stuff is pertinent to what we do, so it's good to know a little bit about it.
You know what's funny? Back when we took it, having anything online was strictly forbidden across the board. It just...
I think COVID's changed a lot of things.
And now we're doing everything remotely. This just goes to show, if the need is there, you know, people will do what they need to do. Any other discussion, any other ideas for our goals this year? Let me share a couple of things. Let me get you thinking about it. I, just in my short time on the board, we've stumbled across this many times. I think we should have an effort to take a look at our forms and the formats of our forms and try to update them because I don't think that they've been updated in quite a while. There's a lot of things that end up being like not applicable. Well, in fact, we even saw an example of that today. The, the daycare form is just, wasn't really even applicable to Kathy's proposal because it wasn't a home daycare center. So think about that, and something else that we've come across almost every meeting when we went through our votes was, and Bob would always say, you know, we really need more flexibility, you know, as a planning board because we have these processes and we have to step through them, and they're written in the ordinance, and we have to do it this way. So, I don't know, for me, I think it would be worthwhile to take a look at some of our, you know, processes, how we go through things. And this actually ties right back into the, the use case table and all that Chapter thirteen stuff. You know, what do we need the planning board to look at? What do we really need the planning board to look at? What things can we delegate all to the CEO? And can we have some flexibility to delegate things to the CEO? Right now, we don't. We don't have any flexibility to do that. So it'd be nice to write in to our rules and processes a way to do that, for example. Any thoughts on that? Either of those two items?
So I don't know if this belongs in our goals for the year, but I will be bending your, your ears probably from time to time. We're working on not only a downtown revitalization effort, but also a riverfront redevelopment initiative. And it looks like that, that in many ways, we'll be able to tie those together. Maybe get some plan, some funding to do some actual planning. And so over the course of time, we'll be looking for, you know, what kind of projects do we want to do in terms of downtown revitalization, riverfront redevelopment? And prioritize that list and move these projects forward. We, we've talked about these, these things for a decade. It's time to move on.
So that's a, that's a question I had with the riverfront. Didn't, didn't we decide that we wanted to write in a riverside development, riverfront development zone in our Chapter thirteen update?
I don't know if we decided or thought that we'd put it in the Chapter thirteen, Chapter thirteen update, but we, we talked about the development district down there. And that's one of the things we can talk about on the twentieth. So I'll put the plug in for our river, riverfront meeting for the twentieth at six. Via Zoom, probably.
Okay.
So if the city is looking for some inspiration or some guidance, I think the town of Millinocket, East Millinocket, and it's just going through this right now, too. They put it out, they put out an RFP late last year for the summer coming up for revitalization of their mill and their riverfront, too, so.
And it really...
If you're looking for a resource.
Those kind of resources are out there because there's nothing, no one, and this has been done before. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We just have to pick and choose the parts we like about it best. I actually found one the other day that, from Belfast, and that referenced their revitalization effort as a Renaissance, which I thought was a pretty nice touch. So, yeah, those resources are out there.
They've got relatives there, and they're Belfast, the whole Belfast area, they, is really nice, what they're doing there.
Any other goals we should add to our list?
I think that's a lot. That's a full plate.
Yep.
And I think, I think before Bob had left, we had talked about, you know, trying to attack some of these things with working groups, you know, scheduling some working groups. And I know everybody's schedule is probably really, really tight, but at some point, we'll have to talk about whether we want to put together some working groups to, to start stepping through some of these things. That use case table, Dennis, I, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the inputs that I made or not, but it's really kind of a mess now, so sorry about that. But it's, it's complex. I mean, there's, there's a lot there. And, and as I went through it line by line by line, I can't even imagine how we're going to, as a group, how we're going to go through it line by line by line without getting together in a working group and just doing it. And we can now be able to do it all at once, you know, get together and, you know, maybe do, do half a page and come back and do another half a page and just keep at it until we're done. Did you have any comments on that?
Well, I, I think one of the, one of the easier ways to do that is maybe let's look at the the standards for conditional uses or for those, those projects that have to come to the planning board. And if there's some general idea of certain, as long as they meet certain standards, we'll just let the staff handle it. If it, if it absolutely doesn't meet those standards, it's obviously a no in the zones, but if, if we can create the, the general conditions that the planning board's going to be looking at, I think we could probably go through those quite easily. But that'll have to be another section that comes up quickly in order to do that.
Okay. How does everybody feel about committing some of their time to working groups to knock some, some of this out?
I'm on vacation until April, so.
I think I heard a volunteer to head it up. Was that Drew?
I said I'm on four. I didn't, I didn't say I'd head it up.
I, I heard volunteer. I, thank you. Okay, we'll think about it. We'll talk about it again. Ready to move on? Other business? Any other business?
My only other business would be to thank everyone for your service. I, I think this is a great group, and, and you're right, it's a worthwhile effort. So I know we get down in the weeds sometimes, but it's definitely good work to do.
It is. It's fun. Okay, without any other business, the chair will entertain motions for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
That was Amanda?
Yes.
Second it. Frank?
Motion to adjourn is made by Amanda, seconded by Frank. Drew?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes, yes.
Amanda? Sorry about this. We kind of have to do it this way.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Frank?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Dan says yes. So, thank you, everybody. We're adjourned at 6:51 PM.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Great job, Dan. Thank you.
So, a quick question for those on film. I'm seeing...
Yeah.
I'm seeing somebody here with an ID of 12072. I'm just curious if we know who that is or...
I don't know if Dave tried to dial in. He was frustrated. He invited in.
Okay.
What... do you see anything in the background?
No, it's just black.
For council chambers?
I have a screen that says 12070, but it's... 12072, but it's black.
Yeah, it just says connecting to audio. Maybe somebody was trying to connect their phone to their screen. That last... that last step when you come into the Zoom meeting?
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure we could get some identification on them if they were...
Yeah, and my video never, never came in right. I've got Christmas tree flashings all over the place, and people's faces are supposed to be... it's a mess. I don't know what it is, but maybe it'll work better next time.
Well, we... like I said, we had an issue.
Oh, they just...
HDMI.
They're gone now. So, who just hung up?
I kicked them out.
Oh, you did? Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks.